Thank you. Councillors, stand please.
Welcome to this special meeting of council today. Part of the agenda obviously is to receive here and consider submissions for the budget. Swan Hill City Council acknowledges the traditional custodians of the land on which we meet, and pays its respects to their elders, past and present. councillor McPhee.
Thank you, Mr Mayor. We, the councillors of Swan Hill City Council, declare that we will undertake the duties of the officer of councillor in the best interests of our community and faithfully and impartially carry out the functions, powers, authorities and discretion vested in us to the best of our skill and judgment.
Thank you. Please be seated. We have apologies today from councillor Chris Jeffrey and councillor Anne Young and from CEO Scott Barber. Directors, officers present. To my left, Leah Johnson, acting CEO, Laura O'Dwyer, acting director of infrastructure.
Move the motion and we accept those apologies, Mr Mayor.
Thank you. Thank you councillor McPhee. Second for that motion councillor McKay. All in favour? That's carried. Thank you. Sorry about that. Thank you. Directors, so I've got part of the way there. Michelle Granger, Director of Development Planning and Barn Pratatt, Director of Corporate Services. First item, do we have any disclosures of conflict of interest, councillors? If not, we will move to section two of the agenda. Officer reports for decision. Item 2.1.
Can I just make a declaration on the conflict of interest? Just in case, I'm a paid-up member of Sustainable Living in Mallee, so whether that needs to be recorded? Not on the executive, but I'm a paid-up member.
Well, we can note that. Thank you. Councillor McKay, you're a paid-up member as well?
Yes.
Okay, thank you councillor McKay.
I'm not on that.
As we're not making any decisions today, we will be hearing submissions, not making any decisions today. Don't see that being an issue. So we will move to item 2.1, to receive and hear submissions to the proposed 2024/25 budget. Mr Pratatt, over to you for your report. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr Mayor. This report deals with the budget submission. The budget submission is open on 19th of December 2024 and closed on 17th of May 2024. At the close of submission, Mr Mayor.
Microphone, please. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr Mayor. At the close of submission, Mr Mayor, the council received four submissions. Submitter one, the submitter questions the link between the draft budget and the council plan, objectives of reducing health impacts of climate change. A fairer question was asked as to how much council spends on tree planting, how many trees this provides and whether council has plans to do where and why. This submitter, Mr Mayor, will be presenting the submission as well. So at the end of the report, they will be asked to present the submission by the mayor. Submitter two, Mr Mayor, the submitter expressed a concern over the people leaving the municipality and moving into greater communities and that the Lake Voga could be an option for such a development. They did not provide any details, the contact details or the names, Mr Mayor. The next submission, number three, is a request for information. The submitter wished to be advised as to the allocation of 1.2 million surplus from 2223 financial year, which we responded by an email to him. He did not provide any further submissions after that. Submitter four, summary of submission, Mr Mayor. This submitter raises some concern regarding increased council cash contribution for capital works, operating and cost effectiveness, the rate cap increases dependence on grant funding, solar panel on Swan Hill Leisure Centre, services provided by private entities and capital works project suitability and management. This submitter did not wish to present, do a verbal presentation of his submission, Mr Mayor. So therefore they are not here. The recommendation, Mr Mayor, that the council receive and hear submissions for the proposed 2425 annual budget. Number two, prepare responses to the submission and table at the unscheduled meeting of the council for the concentration on 4th June 2024, Mr Mayor. The submissions are attached. I will take that as read, Mr Mayor. I'm able to take questions if there's any. Thank you, Mr Mayor.
Thank you, Mr Pratatt. Any questions of Mr Pratatt? Councillor Kelly.
Yeah, thanks, Mr Pratatt. Just had a question about submissions that are from anonymous people with no name, address, anything. Do we have to accept them and do we have to accept them with the same standing as people who have? Because we don't actually know if that person is even living in our municipality. So what does the rules say?
I'm not sure of the rule, but I guess, yes, we would be obliged to receive the submission. The submission appears to be genuine, related to our budget and therefore we would be able to provide the councils at the next meeting the response that we want to provide them. But we would not be able to provide any response to them directly.
Yeah, I suppose, is it a risk that that person isn't in our municipality and therefore I'd just be keen to know, and you can bring them back in a different time, the rules about that because maybe we'd get more submissions if we did allow anonymous ones. But I think people need to put their name to their submission. So I feel like we shouldn't have accepted that one myself. But I'd be keen to know what the rules were about it.
I'll be happy to check the local number.
You might be setting a precedent. Next year you might get 50 anonymous submissions.
Thank you. I'll bring that to the council's attention at a later meeting.
Any other questions?
Oh, I move a motion already, Mr Mayor, as per the recommendation.
Thank you councillor McPhee. Do I have a second for that motion? Second councillor McKay. Do you wish to speak to the motion?
Yes, quickly, Mr Mayor, thank you. I'd like to congratulate all those that did submit. And in relation to councillor Kelly's concern about a anonymous submitter, I think that just depends on what weight the councils give those submissions. I think it's good to see that people, whether they're in our municipality or outside our municipality, are making comment on our budget is a good thing. And I think it's, we should take on board all submissions irrespective of where they come from, but give them the appropriate weight to each one. But as I say, I'd like to thank all those, the four people that did take the time to make a submission. Thank you.
Thank you councillor McPhee. Councillor McKay, do you wish to speak?
Yes, I'd just like to thank the members of the public who took the time to digest or read the budget, take an interest in it and also put in submissions. It is very welcome. Thank you.
Thank you councillor McKay. Have any speakers against the motion? If not, I'll put the motion, all those in favour. Motion is carried. Thank you. Could I have a motion, given that we have one submitter who wishes to present, councillors? Could I have a motion to suspend standing orders? Thank you councillor McPhee. A second for that councillor McKay. Those in favour? That's carried. Thank you. So we have a submission from, the submitter was actually Yana Sarantis on behalf of Slim, who are present, Yana's not present, but there are people here today who wish to present on their submission. Just, sorry, so we've got Peter Thornton, Leanne Skipsy and Helen Tuntah. Are you all wishing to present or do you have a nominated spokesperson? Lots of pointing. Peters are not.
This is all being decided as we walked in the door, but hopefully, I don't know how long we have.
So. Yep, so I'm going to go through that. I was just determining whether you had a nominated spokesperson or if you were all speaking, that's all.
I'm going to speak, but I don't know if the lady's going to speak.
That's all right. So in accordance with our governance rules, you're allocated three minutes to speak to your submission. And there's actually no discussion or debate today about your submission or about your presentation. However, councillors may ask you questions to clarify any points you raise in regard to your submission or to your presentation. So is that clear?
Hundred percent.
Hundred percent. So we will ask you to come forward. I know you got kicked out of there before, but we will ask you to come forward. I believe there's a microphone there. Yes?
Hello?
Thank you. You probably won't hear anything. It'll just be on the live stream. So for the benefit of the live stream. So Peter, thank you. Thank you for your submission, your part in the submission and for taking the time to come today to present. And yeah, we look forward to hearing your presentation. Thank you.
Thank you. Thanks for the opportunity. Thanks to Yana, who was the main person who put the submission together in conjunction with the rest of the membership. I'd just like to acknowledge and pay respect to the First Nations of our region, Wambo Wambo and Wadi Wadi in particular, especially because it is reconciliation week. I feel very strongly about making that statement. And I would read the submission because it is brief, but I don't think we have time for that. I'll just say that our submission is largely general in nature, based around and wanting to better understand how the budget reflects the council plan and also the sustainable living strategy, of course, that our group is very interested in. In essence, we are using the opportunity to collaborate, to look to further collaborate with council and look for opportunities where we can make bigger allocations from budget to work to address the issues of climate change, the impacts on health, improve livability in our municipality. And we just firmly believe that if we're collaborating, we're going to be better able to meet the targets that not only council but our community have at our heart. And also we're going to be better able to leverage funding and bring resources to our municipality. And that's really important. I think councillor Kelly made a submission for a motion last week about a committee based around sustainability. We would strongly support that because, again, collaboration is the key. If we're working together, we're going to achieve our aims. And I think that we can learn a lot in the submission. There were a few ideas thrown around about how council might support not only local businesses and householders to improve their sustainability in their homes, in their businesses, which can also help to bring down emissions and cut costs. So there are a lot of win-wins out there for our community in terms of the timing for not only action on climate change but improving the bottom line for homes and businesses in terms of renewable energy. Ressour is the cheapest energy you can get and everybody, everyone should have it. So yeah, I guess there's a lot of things that we could be working on together and we'd like to see further allocations in the budget and look for demonstrations, I guess, from council as to where the targets in the council plan and the sustainable living strategy, where we can see, you know, spending on that, on those areas.
Okay, thank you. Bang on, too. Thank you.
I thought that little noise before was me going overtime.
No, 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 it wasn't. It wasn't. So, no, no, that's fine. Yeah, I would have told you when you needed to wrap it up, but that's fine. Thank you, Peter. Thank you for your submission and your presentation, councillors. Are there any questions that you'd like to ask of the submitter? Just remembering, this is not about discussion or debate. It's just about asking questions to clarify any parts of this submission. No other councillors? Oh, yeah, councillor Kelly?
Thanks for your submission and explaining what it's about. Is there anything in the council plan particularly that you feel isn't reflected in actions? That you want to just elaborate on more?
In our submission, I didn't have time myself. Yana was the one who looked more closely at the budget. So I can't speak to that in great detail, but our recent communications with council are specifically around renewal areas for spending on renewable energy and also livability around green spaces and encouraging planting of more trees in our community. So I suppose both of those areas are really areas that we'd like to hone in on and work together with council to see where we can either get direct spending from the budget or leverage to get further funding from outside and use that to benefit or help boost the budget, so to speak. You know, I'd also, in what's looking, I did do it to act the budget. I can see that some enterprises are rated differently. I'm a stone fruit grower at Warrenine and I noticed that horticultural properties are rated at a higher rate than dryland properties. I believe after speaking with one of our local growers who is also a councillor I made some inquiries as to why that is the case. And I was of the understanding that it was a drought, instigated in a drought here. And I just wonder what the impulse of that is on the budget and how we might, we need to make sure that everybody in the council area is rated fairly and therefore will have the optimum amount of money to spend on different programmes within the municipality. So yeah, I was a little shocked to see that horticultural properties pay higher rates than dryland properties. I'll just make that a note on the record.
Okay. Councillor McPhee?
Just one question. You didn't put them submission, I understand, Peter. But one of the parts is you're talking about the main limitation for people to uptake the measures in relation to upfront costs, all of that type of thing. One thing I sort of, and all submitters do the same thing, with a budget, we only have so much. So when you make submissions, can you explain to us what we need to take out of the budget to increase that? Because we've only got so much money. So if we're going to put something more into another area, what areas will we take the money out of?
Good point. And without having a good chat about things and better understanding of where you've allocated other funds, my immediate response to that would be, well, make sure you're rating everybody fairly and equally and therefore you won't, like, for example, if dryland farmers were being rated the same as horticultural farmers, you'd be probably getting quite an extra that we could.
Just to clarify, under the rate cap system, we can't actually increase our overall, the overall amount of money that we can gain from rates. So I'm just, that's as a point of clarification for your benefit and for those watching. So.
But it's a ratio of cents in the dollar, capital and proof, I understand.
That's how rates are struck, but the overall amount of rates can't increase. It's capped by the state government. It says how much we can raise. Hence councillor McPhee's point that to put additional spending in, another programme has to be cut.
Exactly. I mean, I could think of quite a few, I could think of quite a few areas where you might, for example, not, there's discretionary spending where I noticed in the budget that, what was it called? Basically differences or there was a wording where dollars or variations, that's the word I was looking for, variations to the budget were documented, for example, where there was greater income that wasn't expected and also spending that wasn't budgeted for. So for example, that sort of discretionary spending, that I don't know if it does come through council as a motion or whether it's something done, I don't know how that spending is agreed to, but I noticed that there's quite a few differentials or variations to the budget. And there's been spending in there. There's often actually increased revenue that comes that's not budgeted for as well. So there's a few ideas. But yeah, hundred percent understand that, you know, council has specific areas of responsibility. And certainly some of these areas around climate change and the health impacts are legislative responsibilities of local government. So again, just keen to work together and keen to collaborate. So we best understand what the responsibilities are and also how we can get, you know, bring more budget, more funding into our region to address these issues.
Thank you. I have a question, just on your first paragraph of your submission. So you've suggested that council should offer rebates for upgrading home, homes' energy efficiency, insulation, ceiling, installing split systems, installation of solar and batteries, just to name a few. How would you propose that that system of offering rebates with ratepayer money would work?
So I think that Yana was suggesting that there was a, I guess, throwing some ideas out there. She certainly is familiar with one of the local government areas in the North East that is doing a similar thing. Now, how they've generated the revenue to do that, whether they've done that through grants or through direct rates, I'm not sure. Obviously fairness would have to be taken into consideration when giving rebates. You know, there are people who own properties, there are renters, for example. I guess it would be a matter of first understanding what the benefits to community were and then looking at the spending ratio and how that's done. So yeah, it would take a lot of research first and a lot of discussions, I suppose, about how that would run. But, you know, again, it's just one of those things. There's a win-win out there at the moment. We have a very short amount of time to address climate change and the cost of a lot of these renewable technologies has come down a lot. And so that means that in an area like ours, for example, rooftop solar is the cheapest energy you can get. So if, for example, and we're looking at some of these opportunities at Warrenine in our stone fruit industry, what would be the benefit for every business that's growing stone fruit in Warrenine to have a renewable energy solar system and potentially batteries as well? The balance, the benefit to your bottom line would be considerable. We're already doing it in our own business and we've halved our power costs. And what benefit would that bring to the municipality if every household and every business, for example, was winning there? That leaves money in your pocket to spend in our own community rather than spending it outside the community when you pay multinationals for fossil fuel, I suppose, or power that way. So yeah, just looking at that kind of thing.
Okay, thank you. Is there any other questions, councillors? Councillor Kelly?
Yeah, I had a question. When will these questions that Slim has asked, when will they be answered? Will they be answered by the staff in a letter?
I'll cover that.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, I'll cover that later on. If there's other questions of the presenter?
Yep.
And then I'll wrap it up. One more question and I'll wrap it up.
I note that Dr Sarantis isn't here. Would a later time for this meeting have helped with that? Because meeting at one o'clock probably did restrict some people from getting here.
Definitely, yeah. So it's obviously a difficult time for people who are working full-time. I'm lucky, I work in my own business, so I've got a bit of flexibility. And I thought that it was really important. We recently presented to council as a group and we just want to keep doing that and keep looking for opportunities. It's unfortunate that we can't have a more open and more low-key sort of, you know, chat about things. Obviously, this isn't the forum to do that, but we would welcome that opportunity. And we have more recently communicated with council as to trying to find that time to meet in a more informal way so we can move forward with some of these ideas that we have. And yeah, so certainly that Yana would have loved to have been here. And she welcomed the fact that she's a relative newcomer to Swan Hill. She's getting involved in community. We're a volunteer organisation and we've got a great membership, very enthusiastic and I think it's a real asset to our community.
And just my last question, through you, Mr Mayor.
Yeah.
Your group started in 2014, was it?
2008.
2008. And just back onto this, our budget, would you like to see in the budget and in the council plan certain targets and what would some of those targets possibly be? Can you think of any?
Yeah, well, I mean, I guess the thing is you have, you have council plans. Council plans are essentially their targets, aren't they? And I guess when a budget is where you show where your priorities lie. And so it would be great to, I don't know whether putting a submission in when we get the reply, there's not really the opportunity to change the budget until next year, I assume. I don't know how it works. So yeah, any opportunity, like, for example, a committee that was made up of, say, local government, community, potentially even some state governmental representatives who were working together on this collaboratively, you could revisit, for example, whether it be the council plan or the sustainable living strategy, revisit and just see how you're going with some of those targets, yeah, if you did have targets. I was speaking, I dropped into the economic development strategy drop-in session yesterday. And certainly Nathan Kieran was saying that that's what they're intending to do with the economic development strategy is that they are planning to revisit on an annual basis because it's all very well to have plans and we all need plans and strategies to sort of have something to go by. But unless we revisit them and hit the target and spend money on it, it's pretty hard to achieve what we're trying to achieve or what we say we're going to achieve.
Thank you. Thank you for your responses. And just to give you some clarity on reviewing council plans, we review the council plan quarterly. So it comes to a council assembly and then to a council meeting quarterly, which gives all councillors the opportunity to have input into reviewing the council plan and the things that are in the council plan. So we do have some confidence that we actually do do that process. It's not just a document that's done and sits on the shelf and gets dusted out at the end of the term. So thank you, Peter, for your submission and for presenting today and for answering those questions. In terms of responses, council officers will now draft, prepare responses and at a special meeting of council next week, we will determine to approve or amend those responses and whether to amend items in the budget as a consequence of the submissions that have been made or to adopt the budget as is or, you know, as I said, make changes. So that's the process from here. So yes, you will get your own response to your submission, but also it will be covered through a council meeting next week as well. So again, thank you. Thank you for attendance today. Can I have a motion to resume standing orders? Thank you councillor McPhee. Seconder councillor McKay. Thank you. Those in favour? That's carried. Welcome councillor Moore. The second item on the agenda for today, councillors, item 2.2, amendment of a section 173 agreement at 13 River Oaks Drive. Ms Granger, your report, please.
Thank you, Mayor. We've got an application in front of us to amend a section 173 agreement. The section 173 agreement restricts the area of land that can be developed between the property and the Murray River. The request is to amend that to allow people to, or it's reflected in the section 173, it's on title. And to amend that, you need to go through a process. The first part of the process is to seek in principle support from the council to go through that. What we are asking today is that you give us in principle support, which will then kickstart a process where we need to give notice to any other person affected by the agreement to see if they consent to amending the section 173 agreement. In the application before you today, we've got details about the change in setback, that the swimming pool will continue to provide adequate setbacks. The DCA, the authority that asked for the agreement to be on the title in the first place, has provided consent to the agreement and that some of the adjoining landowners have also supported it. So we're not asking you to make a decision on whether or not we amend the section 173 agreement today. We're asking for your consent, your in principle consent to amend the agreement so we can proceed to give notice of the landing permit application.
Thank you, Ms Granger. Any questions, councillors? This has been through an assembly and been explained in detail, but are there any questions that need to be brought up today? If there's no questions, can I have a motion, please?
Motion has two recommendations.
Thank you councillor McPhee. Move councillor McPhee. Second councillor McKay. Councillor McPhee, do you wish to speak to the motion?
Yes, quickly, look, the people at DCA that put the 173 originally have agreed to this coming ahead and I see there's no problem. Neighbours agree to it. So I think it's a win-win for everyone. Thank you, Mr Mayor.
Thank you councillor. Thank you councillor Mcfee, councillor McKay, do you wish to speak?
I'm in agreement, as councillor Mcfee said, DCA have agreed with it. It is essentially a change of about 10 metres, is that correct? Where the developed area is and it's not a large building or anything of that nature and any other future developments would have to go through the same process, so I'm in agreement as well, thank you.
Thank you councillor McKay. Many speakers against the motion? If not, I'll put the motion, those in favour, the motion is carried, thank you. That is all the items of business for today councillors. Thank you to members of the public for your, for your attendance and for those on the live stream as well. And that being said, I will officially close the meeting at 1.33pm, thank you.